I would like to welcome you to the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the Galloway Room, Chatham Community Center, 115 South Main Street, Chatham, Virginia, 24531. I would like to call this meeting to order, and I would respectfully ask that anyone, that everyone please silence your cell phones during this meeting. Thank you. Our board called now to adjourn.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Present.
Dr. Miller?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
I'm here. As we observe a moment of silence tonight, I would ask that everyone please say a special little prayer for our nurses, doctors, and any of our frontline folks, and especially our first responders, EMS, and fire rescue. Thank you. We now ask that you rise before the House of Representatives.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please do. Are the items to be added to the agenda, or any agenda change items? Mr. Hunt?
I'll take the liberty of writing these down. We have several items to add to the agenda tonight, and I was listening now. There will be three changes to the consent agenda. We're going to add a revised Resolution Number 2020-04-04. That is the annual lead maximum carrier approval. What we did was we changed the date by which you have to use. The additional vacation time is extended in the revised resolution to June 30th, 2021, instead of the beginning of the year. We also are adding EMS job descriptions approval as Item 7U. You have a copy of this in front of you. And finally, for consent, we are deleting Item 7S, BB&amp;T tax refund approval. There's some questioning and some documentation missing, and we're going to seek that information from the Commissioner of Revenue and bring that back for your approval at a future meeting. In addition, we have four items to add from matters from closed session. Item one will be to add as Item 14A, Project 10 Local Performance Agreement Approval. And following this approval, we will have a brief economic development announcement by the Chairman. We're excited about that. The second item we're going to add from matters from closed session, this will be Item 14B. It will be the award or the reassessment services. We will have a motion about reassessment services. Item three we will add as 14C. That will be approval of county administrator's employment agreement. And the fourth item under matters from closed session will be Item 14D, and that will be approval of county attorney's employment agreement. And finally, last but not least, we will also be adding a closed session to this meeting, legal authority for Virginia Code Section 2.2, 37, 11A8. Subject matter, person of a blank letter, purpose, provision of legal advice slash consultation with legal counsel. And I've emailed all this to Mr. McCluster for the record and to hopefully get our act together on the agenda time.
Any other changes?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the end of the day? So, I can remember, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Okay? Please cast your votes. Please record your vote. Motion taken, you know, Mr. Davis. Our consent agenda. Chairman, make the motion, we approve the consent. The revised consent. The revised consent. Well, second. Second, motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any other to discuss?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
I'm Lieutenant Public Director, Mr. Slump, available?
Yes, sir.
Item K. In regards to, if you're calling. Mr. Slump, Item K, it's a reference in the selection of employees for the DRT, you know, the change in the contract there.
Yes, sir.
And also, I think it's a resolution that speaks to the 30% performance. Is, if we have agencies that are all underneath that 30%, is this termination permanent, or is it maybe a two or three year period of time before it's reevaluated?
That would be up to the commission, time or speed commission, every time. That will be discussed again next.
Because the resolution came as a recommendation from those folks.
Yes. And Mr. Farmer, I might jump in. We, there's intentional use of the word "made" in the resolution, so it's subject to.
Okay. Another question I had was, in reference into hiring, I guess replacement for our county vehicles that will have partners or any calls, can you talk to me in terms of additional costs and also the revenue that now the county will have?
So when you look at the cost initially, we both, roughly $850,000 cover everything that's associated with the area. Cost would be initially more to win capex revenue, we can get from building, should be equal as not many of the last thing we're doing, I think, is my whole.
And equipment wise, is there any of the part costs from counties?
Not that we've already, we've already planned for some of that, but most of that's already in action or either will be short, so. I've been setting this up to go in that direction in case it's ever happening again, so it should be fairly good to move on.
Next item was Item P, which is something to sell rescue want. Look like, in summary, we have a call for this pair of gloves.
Yes.
We try to get more reviews by going through this national online.
Well, it's basically we're consigning, so someone will get a fire suit if they sell, so it's not auctioned for.
I guess the funds generated will go into your.
Time when we discuss that with the fire next, trouble once again. Can we go to purchase another type of rescue vehicle, sending, sending the perks, that's probably trying to get them work.
Sure. No problem. I have a question.
I have a question. Yes, sir. You and I have discussed this, but my concern was offering positions to our citizens, our volunteers that are already serving rather than a big person that was going to lose their job because of this. So what provisions have we made to make sure that our people come first? Don't know if I can legally do it that way, but I put it in the case yesterday to visit a couple of DRT employees, one of them works for DRT, they're volunteers in camp. So they still have service, always working for the volunteer, just give some of the examples, yes. And I've already had some calls from our volunteers seeking employment, which great to make, I mean, that this one, I hope we can do. Well, just right. And so they, yes, to me, they, they should. Absolutely. We have found a way where they can still work for us and model people, so they won't pay for it. So that's, thank you. Good. It's already had. That's all. Okay. Okay, please cast your votes. Please record your vote. Motion taken, you know, Mr. Davis. Okay. We got a couple of presentations to make. Mr. Scares is going to make the first one, and then we're going to follow up with Mr. Farmer making the second.
Mr. Warren, we actually have votes on the consent agenda because we have items. So we have this attached on the first.
We just brought them in.
People are looking at each other because we had a different vote before that to add to each other.
So you want us to do what now?
We're going to take a vote on the consent agenda.
All right.
One more time.
Okay. Mr. Scares, please move on.
No, this is another vote. The other one was a.
I'll make that one second. Second. Motion made, seconded. Please record the. Thank you. Mr. Scares will do the proclamation for National Public Safety, Public Communications Week, followed by Mr. Farmer doing one for proclamation, National Animal Control Appreciation Week. Come on up, guys. Okay? This is a proclamation for National Public Safety, Public Communications Week, April 12th through 18th, 2020. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time, they require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the responsible police officers, firefighters, and air medics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our communities, law enforcement officers, firefighters, and EMS providers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from Pennsylvania County, Virginia, the county, citizens who telephone the county's Emergency Communications Center. And whereas county public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact county citizens have with emergency services. And whereas county public safety telecommunicators, excuse me, telecommunicators, transmit this out, are the single vital link for the county's law enforcement officers, firefighters, and EMS providers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas county public safety telecommunicators have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each county public safety telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, professionalism during the performance of their job in a best year. Now, therefore, Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize April 12th through 18th, 2020, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. In the county, in honor to men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and our citizens safe, due under my hand, this day, 21st, 21st day of April, 2020, Robert W. Warren. Thank you, sir. Glad to have you on, Mr. Davis. We really appreciate you. Thank you. How long, why, why can Susan go to step please?
Come on up, Mr. Dudley.
Mrs. Susan, our Chief Animal Control Officer and Head Supervisor, Mr. Lee.
All right. It says right here, we have Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week proclamation, April 12th through 18th. It says, whereas National Animal Care and Control Association is committed to setting the standard of professionalism in animal welfare and public safety through training, networking, and advocacy. Whereas NACA is also known as the National Animal Care and Control Association. It doesn't end the week of April 12th through 18th each year as Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. Animal control officers dedicate their lives to the health and safety of at-risk helpless animals and to protection of the citizens in the community. Animal control officers respond to calls for service to protect the welfare of helpless animals and pets and rescue them from injury, disease, abuse, and starvation. And whereas animal control officers provide essential community functions, including enforcement of animal control laws, protecting the public from diseases such as rabies, and educating the public on the proper care of community pets. Federal, state, and local government officials throughout the county and country take this time each year to recognize, thank, and commend all animal control officers for their dedicated services they provide to the citizens of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Whereas the Commonwealth recognizes and commends animal control officers for their many dedicated and long hours of service they perform and for filling the commitment providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service. Therefore, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims April 12th through 18th, 2020, as Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week in our county. Board extends its gratitude and appreciation to all county's animal control officers, given under my hand, this is 21st day of April, 2020, Bob Warren, Chairman.
Each person addressing the vote on a hearing of citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county, or registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priorities at the next morning, absent Chairman's approval. No person shall be able to speak who is not signed up. All right? We are opening the floor for the public hearing. You got the names?
The first we have on is Alan Casper.
Would you like me to? Yes, sir. Right.
Thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. I'm Alan Casper. I am here representing Breton Fire and Rescue in the Callens Breton District, and I'm a resident in the actual, actually, the Bannister District. So, I'm the Deputy Chief of Emergency Medical Services for Breton Fire and Rescue. I've been a volunteer in Pennsylvania County for over 38 years, with much of that time spent as an advanced life support provider. I've helped lead and manage multiple successful agencies during that time, both career and volunteer. And I've always enjoyed a very positive relationship with the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. Myself, Chief Hogan, and President and Captain Meeks have come before you this evening to address a disservice being done to our department. As you all are aware, emergency medical response in the Breton community had been in a state of decline for decades. It had reached a point where Breton Rescue Squad was answering only 31% of their calls, less than 1 in 3, a great liability to our community. Breton Fire Department accepted the challenge to fix that, and fix it we did. On July 1st of this past year, Breton Fire merged with Breton Rescue, formed Breton Fire and Rescue. In less than a year, we have increased call coverage to around 90% on the rescue side while maintaining 100% on the fire side, the best save in our community in decades. This was not something we had to do, but something we wanted to do to serve our community. We added two career EMS staff, soon to be three, at zero cost to the county. Very little profit is being made from our billing program, I have to factor in a little of this cost, but we are serving our community at a higher level, which was the goal. The reality is, however, it takes funds to operate. After many attempts to discuss this key issue with members of county management with no results, we're coming to you, the board. Despite being one of the busiest, if not the busiest, fire and rescue agency in the county, after discussing with Mr. Slump, we're being underfunded compared to other agencies of similar size by almost $25,000 to $30,000 a year. According to Mr. Slump, they can't fix this. We were informed by members of the newly formed county commission that our own representative, Mr. Scruggs, stated that we had over $1 million in the bank, so we should not receive more funding. I can assure you, this is not factual. We do have some.
He's speaking for groups, so he'll get 10 minutes.
I'm sorry, it won't take much longer. We do have some invested funds which help us with our daily operating costs, as many other departments do. The money we have is invested for investment income so that we can make the payments on trucks and equipment we are attempting to replace as fast as possible. This type of politics is just, it's reprehensible that this comes back to us this way. Mr. Scruggs is a live member of former Breton Rescue Squad, which allowed the state of decline in equipment and services. In our ongoing attempt to bring our equipment up to date, we recently purchased the first new fire engine in department history at a cost of almost $600,000, 76% paid with department funds. Our ambulances are old and failing. Our primary unit is a nine-year-old ambulance with almost 160,000 miles on it. That was a hand-me-down from the now-closed Altrus the EMS. This ambulance sat unused for several years. Its two backup units are even worse. One in 2008 and the other in 2004 are remounted box on a newer truck, but it's a 2004 box on this truck. Our park-monitored monitors, which are critical to us, are also old and failing. Breton Rescue leased these years ago with an option to buy at the end. These monitors are no longer supported by the manufacturer. When I have to send an EKG to the hospital, I have to take a picture of it with my phone and send it as an attachment to an email. This is unacceptable. Much of what we brought over from Breton Rescue was in extremely poor condition. Chief Hogan and Captain Meeks will address the mounting cost of the fireside as well. All we're asking is to be treated fair and honestly, something that we do not feel is happening to this point. We're simply asking for comparable funding of similar call volume departments and the assurance that proposed CIP funding will remain in the budget. We ask that you please look closely at proposed changes in the fire and rescue funding being proposed, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Chad Hogan.
I'm Chad Hogan. I'm the chief of Breton Fire Rescue. I live in the County of Breton District. I've served this department going on 15 years. My stance has always been to my own business and to focus on running my department. I think my fellow officers and neighboring chiefs will probably attest to that. I try to stay out of county politics, however, we're here tonight for a couple of reasons, one being the obvious lack of communication between the entities responsible for public safety in this county. The second being our adequate funding from the county in comparison to like agencies in this same county. There must be clear communication on issues as important as fire and rescue. Communication to all board members, communication to all commissioners, communication to all chiefs, communication to all county officials. That has not happened. My agency has stepped up to the plate, and we are more than pulling our weight in this county. We are running approximately 1,800 calls a year. Hours and hours of free labor has gone into making my agency what it is, and that continues every day. Breton Fire Rescue is the busiest department in this county. We're in the process of replacing a 30-year-old fire engine, as Alan said. How many of us here tonight are driving a 30-year-old vehicle, much less risking our lives based on its performance? That vehicle was $600,000. The county contributed $140,000. My agency is responsible for the remaining $460,000. As Alan said, our ambulances are worn out and being run ragged. We've got to have new ambulances, that's $250,000. We've got to have new cardiac arms, that's $150,000. We've got to have new airbags, which cost at least $6,000 apiece, and I have to have 14 at least, plus extra bottles and base pieces for our fire. That's over $100,000. And these are just the absolute, absolute essentials life safety must have. These items alone will cost more than $1 million. So to say the least, yes, we must be very smart with that one, and we are. We must use sound business principles, and you need all of your volunteer agencies to be basically responsible. We're obviously not asking for these kind of funds, but there is almost a $30,000 gap between my agency's funding and some of the other agencies in the county, and we are a business. Now let me be clear, we are not asking you to take money from other agencies to fund us. Our fellow departments need their funding. But that $30,000 is a truck payment. That $30,000 frees up money to go toward some of these other essential items. None of these guys here tonight received a dime for the time, stress, and heavy. We do this for our community, and my people have done an excellent job, and will continue to work hard to do what's best for our department under those that we serve. My agency has been serving this community since 1935. My agency is absolutely vital to this county. My agency is completely transparent. My agency deserves to receive clear communication and with fair compensation. Please see to this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
We have Ben Meeks.
Thank you for having me talk tonight. Name's Ben Meeks. I live in the Callens Breton District, and I'm here representing Breton Fire Rescue. Probably overlapped a little of what they were saying, but we didn't coincide our speeches here, so just bear with me. But I've been the, I'm the EMS captain and current president of Breton Fire Rescue. I've served this county for over 10 years. I facilitated the merger of Breton Fire Department and Breton Rescue Squad, something that had to be done, preserve all of their EMS in the Breton community. EMS response rates, as I already alluded to, was around 31%. We've increased that to 90% since the merger, Mr. Slump compared by that. We're a public safety force dedicated to select where the busiest fire and rescue agency in this county. The call coverage has improved, but the funding from this county has not. The money that we receive from this county is in the form of a block funding, and that's based, was based on previous call coverage from Breton Rescue. Now that we have approved the service to the citizens of Pennsylvania County, and what they're getting, we like to allow them to receive our fair share of funding. That's all we're asking for is our fair share. I want to make it clear that we do not want any other agencies' funding offered. We support all of our volunteer agencies. We need to work together, and we need that money to take care of their departments and their communities. But we do have agencies in this county that are of similar size, similar call volume, that are receiving anywhere from $20,000 to $25,000, $28,000 more than we are. We know Fire Rescue, the call one, is receiving $89,000 a year, $23,000 more than we are. We do just run as many calls as they do. Now, I know that some of you all will say, doesn't Breton have money in the bank? Well, that doesn't matter. What does that matter? So does these other agencies, also identified one or two, but that shouldn't matter for them or for us. What should matter is the call coverage and the services being provided to this county for free. Or. for free, or to low cost. I worked at B D D H T in the Health and Safety Department. If myself and a fellow coworker do the same job and do our jobs well, but I have more money in the bank than he does come evaluation time, I should get less? Seriously, what a joke. Do your part and give us our fair share. It's what thirty thousand dollars we're asking for. Also, I've learned that capital approval money has been frozen for the remainder of this year and possibly for next year. We are asking you on behalf of Redden Fire Rescue, do not breathe and/or cut that money. And I guarantee you other chiefs and captains from around this county and in this room support this and what we're saying. CIP money is vital to some of these agencies, including us. We have to pay four hundred and sixty thousand dollars out of pocket on the new fire engine we just ordered. We have ambulances failing, the need to replace them. We have a new ambulance spec, but now with the freeze of this CIP money, we won't have the ninety thousand from the county to help us purchase this truck. We'll have to eat all of that cost. We need new cardiac monitors, SCBA, et cetera, et cetera, to the likes of a million to two million dollars. We along with others need your help to keep these volunteer agencies going, and if you're not willing to do that to meet an agenda, then you're going to need to find several millions of dollars to give to public safety to meet the full demands of this county's fire and rescue emergency service needs. The last thing I would like to say, please make sure that you know the facts of what's going on with fire and rescue before you approve resolutions and items. Please be sure that the board, along with the Public Safety Department, Fire Rescue Association, and all fire commissioners are on the same page. Take great time.
Before we call the next one, I want to thank you all from this board for your service. It is very important to each and every member of this board to be supported and all of our fire and rescue. We know how vital you all are, but there was one thing to mention tonight that I'm going to correct right back for the public that's listening. I don't know where this rumor got started that there was a freeze on your money for capital needs. We simply pulled it off the agenda because we need more factual information about what our numbers are going to look like from the state and Fed before we can decide how this money is going to end up having to be dispersed. We certainly did not want to have to entertain borrowing money for cash flow and all because we made a capital purchase right now. There is no intent, has never been an intent of this board to take any money away from fire and rescue. If that is ever going to occur, ever going to occur, I'm a hundred percent sure that each board member here will tell you that that would be one of our last resorts, and it would be a case where we had absolutely no other choice, and you all as volunteers would be conferred with and talked about before that happened. So I wanted to clear that up. There's so much rhetoric that gets out of here that is wrong, and I want to be really clear on that because I'm passionate about our EMS and our fire and rescue commission. I think they're trying to do a great job, and I hope you all will be able to work with them. We do have to be patient, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and cash flows differ. The states go home under. We all know it, so please just bear with us, okay? But we're working on it, we hear you, but I really thank each and every one of you that serve fire and rescue folks here tonight, and we appreciate your service. And I tip my hat and kudos to Redden for turning the EMS around. I have watched those numbers, and I know Mr. Palmer is very proud of that change. I personally, as a citizen of Pittsman County, am very proud of what you all have done there, so thank you very much, but I'm proud of our entire county. We couldn't do what we do without our volunteers, so we understand that. But thank you. When that came out that we terminated your money and all that, that, I just kind of went up my spine, so I want to clear that up before we do any further, okay? Next.
Scotty Adams, county of Redden District, I'm here to speak for two agencies, Captain Cool Branch Rescue and the President of Cool Branch Volunteer Fire Company. First, I'll speak on the rescue squad. Rescue Squad's got an ambulance order that'll be delivered in May of this year. Back in two thousand and eighteen, we was awarded, when the fire chiefs and rescue squad Captain Smith, they voted to give us the money along with Matt Herman, and they worked it into budget where both of us would get it for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty. We have our ambulance, I've sent pictures to our county Public Safety Director, and also to my representative, Ben Palmer. I know you said, don't call names out, but I've sent emails, I need to, sir. And also, I think I sent them to Mr. Smillman. We've got to serve, because Mr. Smillman is, lives in our area, he's unique to every one of you. So we need that ninety thousand dollars. There's no way that we can, we can get the other funds, we're going to have to get a little other funds from the bank to pay it. This ambulance is two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, and that's using some old stuff out of the old truck. The old truck's a two thousand and six, and we spent over ten thousand dollars in engine repairs or more. It's a six-point-old Ford, if they have your familiar engines. It broke down Friday on call, so we need that money in progress. We need that check next month. To speak on the fire side, we asked submitted to be on the public consent tonight, consent agenda, to put taxes in for the fire company. Our loan has been approved by Freedom Finance. I submitted to Mr. Palmer tonight through an email and to Mr. Slim. I was told that no bank's loaning money, but our loan was approved prior to COVID-19. We borrowed money for that fire truck, the fire truck is almost six hundred thousand, two hundred and eighty-six, I mean five hundred and eighty-six thousand. With the hundred and forty thousand plus of money in our reserves, we put it down, we still going to end up paying about twenty-five thousand dollars to go to the bank. We need to have a public hearing tonight where that's just approved, just like Matt Herman's fire, where we can get this loan going through, where our truck can start in production. This money, that ninety thousand, that hundred and forty thousand is from two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty. Citizens have paid their taxes for that money. We need that money. Thank you to every board member who here to serve the community. We started in nineteen eighty-seven, we did fire, and eighty-eight in the rescue. Remember on the rescue squad, when Riser won back down, who was there to help you? It was two rescue squads. It was Blaz and Cool Branch. We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you to everyone who's speaking tonight. All right, we'll move down to now, we don't have any more public hearings tonight?
We have rezoning cases?
No. We're now down to rezoning cases, public hearing. Pursuant to Article Five, Division Six, the Pittsman County zoning ordinance, the Board of Supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said ordinance. In accomplishing this important task, the Board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, and general public welfare of the citizens of this county. The Board may ensure that all of its decisions and regulations be directed to these zones and that each be consistent with the environmental comprehensive plan in the best interest of Pittsman County, its citizens, and its prosperity. They still want to review the rezoning case R twenty oh five.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to introduce Ms. Emily Ragsdale, our new Director of Community Developments lead, to this conversation. This is her first appearance before you. She's been working with us since April first. She comes to us from Danville. It is amazing that we have a, had a underutilized planning professional in our county, and it is even more unusual that we were able to find that person and bring it to work with us. I don't know who's thrilled more, the executive team, and Dayton mostly, or Karen Hayes, who's been pulling that load down for some time. But we're so glad to have her and thrilled that she's a local, and look forward to having her with us for many, many, many years to come.
Let's make a real mention. Well, Ms. Ragsdale, she is actually, for those informations, she is Kathy and Tommy Scorpions.
Are you kidding?
Yes. So, yeah.
Is that your thing?
No, hold on. Thank you, it's glad to have you.
Good to have you. Don't be nervous. I'm here with- I'm trying. So the first case is case R dash two zero dash year zero five. Ricky and Deborah Dillon have petitioned to rezone zero point six zero three of an acre located on Pine Rock Road in the Chatham Blair's election district from R one residential suburban subdivision district to A one agriculture district to be combined with their adjacent parcel lands in A one. Planning permission recommended by a five to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioners' request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one seven eight are permitted. The stat summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dillon is here to represent the petition.
Okay, Mr. Dillon, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll put up the public hearing at seven forty-one. Did anybody else sign up? I close the public hearing at seven forty-one. Any questions from the board? I'll let her take a motion from the board. Mr. Chairman, in the case of R dash twenty dash zero zero five, then was Ricky and Deborah Dillon, the petitioners, I'll make a motion that we grant that request.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Mr. Ingram, and I'll thank both of the generals that's in my district. I did talk with my representative, I've viewed this property, and I certainly have another problem in supporting this challenge.
Mr. Chairman, while we're at it, I want to add, if you hear the number, it was five o vote, we have eight commissioners on the board, but we did ask, I think, three stayed home due to distance, so if you hear the five o versus the eight o, that's the reason, so just want to let you know. Thank you.
Motion in second. Please cast your votes. All votes have been passed, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously, Mr. Dillon, your property's been rezoned. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome to hang around if you love what we're doing. If you'd like to leave, please feel free to do so.
Thank you, Alan.
We're down to case number two, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash twenty dash zero zero six, Recurrent Energy Delivered Solar has petitioned to rezone a total of one hundred and thirty-two point five six acres on eight parcels of land located off of West Childs Road, on Irish Road, and on Deep Run Road, in the Banister, Towns, Redden, and Crystal election districts from R one residential suburban subdivision district to A one agriculture district for a solar energy facility, which will also require special use for a minute to be rezoned. The planning commission recommended a five to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioners' request be granted. Once the petitioners, the properties are rezoned to A one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one seven eight are permitted. Stat summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Adam Peterson is here to represent the petition.
Do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
Not at this time, no.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing at seven forty-four. Anyone sign up?
No.
I close the public hearing at seven forty-four. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion approving case R dash two zero dash zero zero six, the property being rezoned as presented.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Palmer, seconded by Mr. Ingram. Any discussion on the motion? Looks like this kind of crossed three districts, Mr. Millers, Mr. Ingram, and myself.
His calendar.
His calendar.
It's your name.
Okay, I was wondering, Alan. I know it crossed a little bit with Dick, but I was, okay. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously, your property's been rezoned, sir.
Thank you very much.
Please feel free to stay if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale, the next one.
Case R dash twenty dash year zero seven, Emma Wilson has petitioned to rezone zero point three nine of an acre located on Locust Drive in the Crystal election district from A one agriculture district to R one residential suburban subdivision district to be combined with the adjacent parcel lands in R one. Planning permission recommended by five to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioners' request be granted. Once the property is rezoned to R one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash two 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 are permitted. Stat summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Wilson is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Wilson, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing at seven forty-six. Board's pleasure. I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Motion made by Mr. Ingram, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Close the public hearing also at seven forty-six. No discussion? Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please tally the votes. Motion carries unanimously, Mr. Wilson, your property's been rezoned, sir. Thank you, you're welcome to stay. Okay.
I like it.
Public hearing's on in case number R two oh dash oh oh eight.
Case R dash two oh dash year zero eight, Ralph and Dolores Rosenbaum have petitioned to rezone a total of fifteen point zero one acres located off of Telegraph Road in the St. River election district from R one residential suburban subdivision district to A one agriculture district for agricultural uses. The planning commission recommended by a five to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioners' request be granted. Once the properties are rezoned to A one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one seven eight are permitted. Stat summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Rosenbaum is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Rosenbaum, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir? I'm sorry, you're not. Thank you. Thank you. I'll open the public hearing at seven forty-seven. If anyone signed up, then. I close the public hearing at seven forty-seven. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, that's in my, the St. River District. I'd like to make a motion to grant Ralph D. Rosenbaum and Dolores M. Rosenbaum a rezone request from R one residential subdivision district to A one agriculture district on a total of fifteen point zero one acres, three parcels of land located on State Route six eighty-five Telegraph Road on Camellia Lane in the St. River District.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Dudley, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, please cast your votes. All votes have now been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously, Mr. Rosenbaum, your property's been rezoned, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Would you likewise, if you're up for the stay?
I'm staying because I've got two neighbors coming up now.
Oh, okay.
I'll take your vote.
All right.
Case R dash twenty dash year zero nine, Kimberly Wade has petitioned to rezone a total of ten point zero nine acres located off of Telegraph Road on Camellia Lane in the St. River election district from R one residential suburban subdivision district to A one agricultural district for agricultural uses. Planning permission recommended by a five to zero vote with no opposition that the petitioners' request be granted. Once the properties are rezoned to A one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one seven eight are permitted. The stat summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mrs. Wade is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Wade, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing at seven forty-nine. Ms. Ragsdale, I'll wrap it, I'll wrap it, I'll wrap myself. And I close it at seven forty-nine. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, that's in my district again. So in case R dash twenty dash zero zero nine, I'd like to make a motion to grant Kimberly Wade, the- the rezone request from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agriculture District on a total of ten point zero nine acres. This will be two parcels of land located off State Route six eighty-five, on Camellia Lane, in the Stan River Election District.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Palmer. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously, Ms. Wade, your property has been rezoned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Likewise, if you would stay around.
Yes, sir.
We have.
Don't like to be around.
We're down to case number six.
Case R dash twenty dash year one zero, Douglas Rogers, has petitioned to rezone a total of eighty-two point nine six acres, located off Telegraph Road on Camellia Lane, in the Stan River Election District, from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agricultural District for agricultural uses. The planning commission recommended by five to zero vote, with no opposition that the petitioners' requests be granted. Once the properties are rezoned to A one, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash one seven eight are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Rogers is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Rogers, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
I won't take a little moment, but I want to comment about a professional, helpful way that the zoning office worked with this rezoning. They know what they're doing it. They do it in a way that is helpful to the people that are trying to rezone. And I certainly appreciate the opposite you had there.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, I'll open the public hearing at seven fifty-two. Anyone sign up?
Uh, Mr. Rogers, was this you that signed up? Did you sign up on here? Was this you?
I don't know.
Okay.
No? I close at seven fifty-two. Uh, which board's pleasure?
This is mine, the last one. Uh, so case R dash twenty dash zero one zero, make a motion to grant Douglas C. Rogers slash RT zero D. The rezone request from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agriculture District on a total of eighty-two point nine six acres, twelve parcels of land located off of State Route six eighty-five, Telegraph Road on Camellia Lane, in the Stan River Election District.
The motion made by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Palmer. Any question to comment? Looks like all of this is surrounded by A one. It kind of.
That's right.
It's kind of weird how it all is all.
That is correct. All of these are basically in the same neighborhood, it's connected together.
Okay, right.
Thank you all for coming out, we appreciate you.
Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously, Mr. Rogers, your property has been rezoned, and thank you very much for your kind comments. Uh, we agree with those comments. Thank you very much. We're down to B, other public hearings. Each person addressed in the board, and the public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and address to his or her place of residency for non-county citizens in an audible tone of voice for the record. Unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall include their remarks at that time. Unless the consent of the board is a peremptively given to extend the speaker a lot of time, absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Public hearing revisions to PCC C thirty-five dash fifty. Mr. Palmer.
Uh, yes. We have a public hearing tonight to revise Pennsylvania County Code section thirty-five fifty. It's attached in your board packet. It currently provides exemptions to county zoning laws for various structures and uses. The proposed revision to PCC section thirty-five fifty seeks said the following additional exemption as number five. And I quote, interstate natural gas transmission bike lines, compressor stations, metering stations, and related facilities certified by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission under the Natural Gas Act. This exemption affects related industries that are previously comprised with an intensive and comprehensive federal vetting, notice, public comment, and review process. This proposed revision to Pennsylvania County Code has been duly and legally advertised and noticed. Uh, no one has signed up for this public hearing. Chair and Warren, so if you open and close the.
I'll open the public hearing at seven fifty-five and close it at seven fifty-five. Okay? Board's pleasure. The motion you issued, we'll finish two thirty of your agenda.
This is two thirty.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the revisions of the Pennsylvania County Code thirty-five dash five zero as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I've requested to cast your votes, please. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Public hearing. Disposition of publicly owned property building to PCCA. Mr. Hicks.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the county currently leases to the PCCA a building located in three forty-eight, more than three year town. At your last meeting, we advised the board they are facing some significant building maintenance issues before us that we scheduled a public hearing, for this evening where you can consider giving that property to the PCCA. And it has been duly advertised, and as of this evening, nobody's signed up to speak to the board yet.
I'll open the public hearing at seven fifty-seven and close it at seven fifty-seven. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion made by Dr. Miller, second by Mr. Ingram. Is there? Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Hold on, hold on. This is, this is. All right, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, is there any unfinished business? No, sir. Ready? We're down to, uh, new business. We have no new business and we have no appointments, so the next item would be fourteen management work session. And those were the four items that we added. We'll approve the agenda, and I distributed the motions to the most accountable. You had those in the system?
Yes.
The first one, I think I had.
Right, correct.
Uh, the board is very happy and proud tonight to be able to tell you that we are announcing tonight, due to distancing COVID nineteen, a business expansion that will benefit the citizens of Pennsylvania County. One of our local companies, Enos Business Forms, is expanding to the tune of almost a million dollars of expansions and fifteen new jobs. Uh, this is really wonderful, especially considering the pandemic that we're going through now. And we're so appreciative that our local companies are still able to expand during that time, and we certainly want to be good business partners with them. So, I'd like to read a prepared statement for you. We are grateful to announce the expansion of one of our local companies, which is still growing after seventy successful years of operating in the town of Chatham, Virginia. Uh, this expansion will not only create valuable jobs in a time where they are much needed, but it will also utilize a current vacant building on their campus. I congratulate Enos Inc. for continuing to win valuable business offers and contracts, and thank them for their continued commitment to our growing community. Thank you very much to the entire company and all of its employees, and we're really happy to hear that fifteen new Pennsylvania County citizens will have an opportunity for employment. So, we look forward to that. That's good news tonight, but really good news.
I'll hand it over.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we also, in addition to this joyous occasion, we need to approve that local performance agreement.
Okay, I'll give a motion.
I'll make your motion.
I'll second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Davis. To, that's accepting the performance agreement that was presented to us during closed session. Please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Once again, we're very excited and appreciate their efforts and commitment to our community. Okay, we're down to fourteen B.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize county staff to begin negotiations with the county's reassessment services with Bright Minds LLC. And if successful, I can't read your wording, but if successful during said negotiations to execute a contract related to, related there to up to one million dollars.
You have a second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Scare, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I ask that you record, cast your votes, please. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Once again, for the public, I know it seems like sometimes some of these we move forward pretty quickly. I'd like to just remind you that we start our meeting at four thirty for work session. So, all these items have been discussed in detail, either in open session or in closed session. So, by the time we get here, they've been well checked. So, I'd just like to always remember to tell our citizens that, that, you know, if you really want to get into the weeds and nuts and the bolts of what's going on in your county, please attend the work sessions that are open to the public at four thirty, just prior to your board supervisors meeting. Okay, we're down to four C.
I gave these motions to Mr. Davis.
Chairman, personnel. Yes, sir. Uh, being the personnel chairman, uh, having been tasked with these positions, we have to look at Mr. The county attorney, as well as the county administrator, for heavy task. These two gentlemen are excoriated, and they're put through certain things. And we have to have them match them up for their performance. And we feel in Pennsylvania County, this is not the greatest time. I'm sure that we're going to have people that disagree. We have to move forward. And with, with the county administrator, we feel that he's done a great job. He saved several hundred thousands of dollars, uh, probably some that we don't know about. And just not here lately, but over the transition of about three years. So, with all that said, I will make a motion that we approve the county administrator's employment agreement as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to publicly state that due to personal reasons, I'll be standing on this bench.
Any further discussion? Okay, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Uh, motion carries six oh with one extension. All right, we're down to the next item. I think you have that too, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, as far as the county attorney's employment agreement, he's done a great job, uh, for, for, for humanly speaking. Of course, we don't live in a perfect world, we're not all perfect. But we feel that he has met up to the task that we've put him through over the last three years, even in our questioning and our evaluations. Not only that, Mr. Smithman, as well as the county attorney in the PCSA, take responsibility that the board has taken, due process with. Those two will be tasked with far greater responsibilities going forward, dealing with our public, our Pennsylvania County Service Authority. And we hope to make it far better for our citizens and constituents of Pennsylvania County. And so, with that particular responsibility put on the county administrator, as we look at the county attorney's employment agreement, we expect the same from him. And we're expecting better and better evaluations come next year, performance out of these two in the oncoming weeks. So, I make a motion that we approve the county attorney's employment agreement as presented.
You have a second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Ingram. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, please ask you to record your vote, cast your votes.
Notice he said the better twice.
Okay, all votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're down to fourteen, I guess we're down to fifteen now on this.
Yes, let's knock fifteen and sixteen out, and then we'll go into closed session for the one item we have. If I have a second?
We're down to, are there matters from? We just didn't mention, uh, board members' reports. Uh, I'll start with Dr. Miller tonight. Mr. Davis.
I have none.
Mr. Scare. Mr. Dudley.
I have got one.
Okay.
And, um, I'm really proud of what we're doing, um, in our area. In the town of Hurt, um, we started a feeding program for the children. Uh, everybody realizes this COVID nineteen, um, has ceased the balance of the school year for the children. And so, um, I called up the town of Hurt, um, and wow, they was in the middle of a meeting discussing the same thing. And, um, some of these children, if they don't go to school, they don't eat. That's the bottom line. And, you know, we, we're blessed and fortunate to have what we got. So, uh, we thought and decided to step up in our community, um, show the people that we care for the town of Hurt. And, um, I want to introduce the mayor and the vice mayor. They're both here this evening. I'd asked them to come, because I told them I'd rag on a little bit. But our town has really gone, people are ecstatic about the new mayor. You keep looking around, I'll introduce him and say.
What are we looking for?
But our new mayor is sitting in the back. His name is Gary Hollitt, and I'll have him stand. Gary is a local businessman, he owns his own business. He's formerly with, um, what's the name of that investment company?
Edward Jones.
Edward Jones, don't hold it against him or them, maybe. But he does a wonderful job, and the people are so thrilled with the job he's doing. Um, he takes no pay whatsoever. Um, he's doing it because he loves the community. I got with Gary, um, and also got with the vice mayor, Shirley Barstail Hill. And I asked her to stand as well. She's right behind Dr. Miller, and, um, she's done a wonderful job. Also, Shirley's on the Stan River Riffle Board as of now. So, that's another thing that she's going to be helping to serve here in the county for this as well. But we started the program, um, about the middle of March. We got together, and we sit down and had a meeting. And on March twenty-fifth, we had our first feeding. I had gotten with, um, the school administrator, Mark Jones. And, uh, I told him, I said, look, these kids, it's on this feeding program. They cannot afford, if they're on a feeding program, to drive from Hurt to Gratna and back for a meal, which makes sense, uh, economically, uh, for them not to drive. So, with that, Mark gave me access to the school gymnasium. And from the twenty-fifth. So with that, Mark gave me access to the school gymnasium, and from the twenty-fifth of March, all the way up till this past Monday, and I, I just want to give these two guys all the accolades I can, we have fed six hundred and fifty-seven children that have come through that school. And I'm going to tell you, it'll break your heart if you see some of these kids grabbing food and starting eating as soon as they get it. And here you and I, we've got an abundance of everything we need, and I'm so glad that we started it, we didn't do it for any accolades of us, we did it for the kids. And now, also, I want to mention my wife, she's not here, but man, if I don't mention her, I'm in trouble most of the time. Y'all can sit down, I know you're getting tired standing. But let's thank them, let's give them a hand for being here this evening. Also want to thank my wife, she actually, I took the task of going and knocking on doors and getting help for these kids, donations, anything that people could do. My wife took the task of organizing the food, filling the bags, and having them ready for each time that we feed. And I just want to thank her too, she's done a great job, and we have another feeding this coming Friday. After this Friday, we will be unfed over seven hundred children right here in Hurt. So what a blessing it is. Also, we're, we're reaching out, helping seniors as well. If we know a senior in the area, we don't want them to come out, we will come to them, we'll contact them, find out what they need. And we have delivered to them, I've had people cry, I've had people pray for me, a little bit of everything, and the thanks is just amazing, what, what, you know, and there's a need there, and there's going to be a need, and this thing is not over yet. So just be lifting us up. We've done well with the money coming in, the food coming in, and actually Gary and I sat down with an attorney last Friday, and we're applying for the five oh one three C, which is a nonprofit organization, this way that, you know, when people do donate, it's, it's more appeasing to the companies, it's, it's going to be tax deductible, but what a blessing it's been. I hadn't done it for me, and they hadn't done it for them, we've done it for the children. I like to help people that can't help themselves, and as children cannot help the situation they're in, we, as adults and as citizens of the community, we can step up, and that's what we decided to do. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I've got just three small things. Many of you know, I've been on the dabble Pennsylvania Cancer Board since two thousand and eight, and we service about four hundred and fifty cancer patients throughout the county, and all of them are very important, but you know, when you have the little ones, that's, that's one that tends to really touch you. Little Bradley Stevenson is, is a survivor, and she's going to have her birthday tomorrow, and so they have a, a drive-by parade, and I see the sheriff in the audience, so they need some police cars from five to seven going down Ripley, I'm sorry, Ridgecrest Drive, Night House on the left, since the pandemic has sort of put a damp on the birthday party. It'd be nice that whoever could would drive by, toot to horn. Also, I wanted to likewise thank the telecommunicators and acknowledge what a tough job they have. They are truly, in my opinion, the first responders. You know, it's not like you get outside, take a breath, they're strapped in that center day in and day out, dealing with things that, at all times, sorely helps. And again, I'd like to echo the importance of our fire rescue people, they do a fabulous job, and as far as commitment, it's just unprecedented, and on behalf of, well, myself, the county's not trying to take over anybody's department or equipment, we're just trying to help you make sure that citizens are serving at every time of the week. Thank you, guys, ladies, and gentlemen.
With long.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I went for speakers during the general session, all four from my district, and all four were fire rescue EMS volunteers. And, you know, prior to this meeting, I spoke with most of them one-on-one, and, you know, I can't change or unchange rules, regulations from the past, so whenever there's a problem, you kind of start questioning how did we get to this point? So one day I spoke with Mr. Slimon earlier tonight, and I encouraged him, he said that this would be a future agenda meeting for the, for the fire conditions. Generate a formula on the distribution, something that's, you know, fair and something that they agree on, but not just something that Mr. Slimon arbitrarily comes up with. So I think that'd be a great move forward for our county to have that money distribution formula agreed. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. I've already said part of what I was going to say tonight to clear the air about funding right now, you know, nothing's been taken away from anyone right now, we're just trying to be sure we don't put ourselves in a bad cash flow situation as we get past this point. Also, I want to recognize our sheriff, and play off a little bit of what Mr. Dudley and him are doing up at Hurt. The sheriff's department took the initiative in feeding not only some children, but some seniors that are in need in our community, and Sheriff, we appreciate you being here tonight, and appreciate your service, and what all your folks are doing, and I hope we've been some volunteers from our county employees other than just deputies too, so we appreciate that very much, and appreciate the job you do. Thank you. I also would like to compliment the executive team and the entire staff, as they have been diligently working through this pandemic. They do a lot of teleconferencing and communicating, and I get to see it, sometimes I don't want to pick it up because I'm getting copied on all these emails, sending these streams, and it seems like I spend several hours a day just reading what they've got going on between themselves, but they, you know, they're, they're doing a lot of work, and we appreciate it, and that you're keeping the county moving forward, and hopefully we'll be at the end of this soon, so we can actually be together a little more often, still practice some safe distancing for a while until we are sure we're completely over it, but anyway, I do thank everyone very much for their efforts and all of that. Been a hard time, and it's been a lot of extra hours spent because of it, and Sheriff Taylor, also want to mention that from the tragedy that occurred, that we know those are always tough on our first responders, and your folks, as they have to go through those things and see those tragedies that we had here just recently with the droughts, so we appreciate being all those efforts from everyone that's involved. That's all I have, we're down to county administrators, everything.
Yes, sir, thank you. I would like to follow up on your comment about the way we're working now, and we work a lot by funding, so much so that some days I literally sit at my home desk, six hours without moving, back home, practicing lunch, which is a big perk of working. But what we realized is there's a lot of things we need to talk about that we can't do remotely. So this Thursday, the executive team is going to have a little mini retreat, we're going to, we've set aside four hours, we've got the ability to go to eight, to talk about what happens after COVID-19. And I have a laundry list of things, economic development, capital expenses, EMS, funding, fire emergency mission, how do we get back to work? You know, we need to develop our own plan, how we phase our employees back into the workplace. So all these things, we're going to be talking about Thursday, but the meat of the day is really going to be around finances, because we don't know what our finances are going to look like. We are worried about cash flow, and those that tuned in for the work session, those that we have talked, we have already talked about taking out short-term indebtedness if we have a cash flow problem, just meaning our monthly obligations. We don't anticipate we'll get there, but we don't know. We'll know better than to genuine about our potential debt, which is tremendously leveraged by the General Assembly. And the General Assembly, I believe it's a special session tomorrow, we have no idea how our state share revenue is going to be affected, we know the school system is going to be affected significantly. I think they get somewhere around ten million dollars a year just to sell state share from the state, that will be hurt. They already have been told they're going to lose one point seven million dollars in their propagation. We have heard no communication whatsoever as to the twenty million dollars of state money that supports our county operations in the general fund, so we're concerned. And the biggest fear in finance is uncertainty, and that's where we are right now. We have no idea how this is going to play out. But know that we are this Thursday going to start game planning, Plan A, Plan B, Plan C financially, of what we're going to bring back to the Finance Committee in May to start talking about adjusting our FY twenty-one budget. So also, we will be talking about, or also other things that are going on that I wanted to comment on, include our Sunday closing of the convenience centers. It is inconvenient for many people, I don't mind telling you, I had a full truck of trash Sunday that I didn't get to take to our dump site, unfortunately it's still full today, but our system has been overwhelmed, and our employees were overwhelmed, we had eight days worth of trash and seven days to pick it up, and we were never going to catch up. What this pause has done is allowed us to make sure our equipment is, is being maintained and functioning properly. We have stopped the overflows, and when we reopen Monday morning, we're back in service within four hours, whereas previously it was taken from about three thirty in the morning to five o'clock in the evening, just to recover from our Sunday work. So it's a temporary measure, but it's a measure that's helping, and we appreciate our citizens' patience as we work through this period. And I'm sure once spring cleaning goes away, things will calm down, once people get back to work, things will calm down, but jurisdictions throughout the Commonwealth experience in the same terms in solid ways. We have approved this evening the positions necessary to begin EMS services to handle function to back up our volunteer agencies. We will begin advertising for those positions immediately, and we have already provided letters of conditional employment to the DRT staff as an incentive for them to stay with DRT through the conclusion of their contract, which is June thirty, twenty twenty. And then finally, well, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Hunt, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay, somebody want to read this in the closed session, Mr. Hunt?
I'll read this. The motion in a closed session, legal authority, Virginia Code Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A eight, subject matter, person, evidence, language, letter, purpose, provision of legal advice slash conversation with legal counsel. The motion, second.
Second. Motion made, it's seconded. It'll go rolling, Paul.
Dr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Fox.
Okay, so, are we, can we stay in here next?
No.
No, we got to go.
Yeah.
We got to.
We're going to the other side, we don't forget, John. We're now in, open session.
I'm not in there.
Open session.
Now we're here.
Five till ten. I will now certify, being resolved in meeting of Pennsylvania County Board Supervisors on April twenty-first, twenty twenty, the board hereby certifies by a reported vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge on the public business matters law, exempt from the November meeting progress of the Fraternal Freedom of Information Act, and then by motion authorized the closed meeting for her discussion and consideration of the closed meeting. If any board member believes there was a departure from the requirements of the Act, he shall so state prior to the vote indicating substance of the departure, the statements shall be reported, board's men.